Never a busy result to resolve complaints. And some, that was one of the things that we said, we definitely had it defined in there, but sometimes you wait on it. If we have to have studies done, how long does that take? But somebody else will have a definition in there, how many days it will take to resolve complaints as far as like. Will the complaints be heard within thirty days, sixty days? I don't know.
Yeah, so is that the topic we'd like to discuss on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So my thought on that is, you have a complaint, so for, especially for the door covers. On page five, you have a requirement for if someone were to have a utility wind project, that they would have to come up with a complaint resolution process. Essentially, if the sound is too loud, you would want to, in most cases, and most communities do this, have an operator of one of these projects address the complaint initially, especially when you're in a township that would not have essentially staff to address their complaints. And you also want to have community, you want to have buy-in also from your operator. So the concern is, what if someone files a complaint, I think this is a fair concern, and utility does nothing?
That was an attempt, that was one of the questions of, okay, well, what if they don't do anything? What's the township going to do unless the timeline, is the township just going to address the issues?
So I think how you do, I'm not a huge fan of putting a hard number in there to say it must be addressed within thirty days, because complaints are different. So a noise complaint is substantially different than, sometimes you see complaints, so in projects that I've observed, sometimes this process will be used if there's construction of these and someone has dust from, the trucks are too dusty. I mean, that's a complaint that can maybe be resolved in a day. A sophisticated noise complaint may require an acoustical engineer to go out and determine if the turbines working correctly, and that could take a while. So what I think, a way to make sure the township's informed of what's going on, is come up with a system of reporting for the complaints. And you can maybe make that even, like, report complaints and any actions taken on a monthly basis to the planning commission or to the township board. In this case, because I believe the township board approves special use permits near township, it might make sense to go to the township board, or it could go to the zoning administrator. I mean, it could go to a variety of different entities, or it could go to everybody. And that way, if they're reporting complaints that they're receiving every month, you know, you know, if it's three months in a row and complaints aren't resolved, you know that the township may potentially take action. And for this, it's important to realize that on, that there is a, on page eleven, and then it's double I, there's a requirement for an operator to have a continuing escrow for ordinance enforcement. So let's say they're taking a hundred twenty days on a complaint, and you could trigger, the township could trigger this on their own to pay for basically investigating a complaint on their own. The intent is to try to get these operators to resolve complaints on their own, because one, it's their project, and then two, it's probably the most efficient way, because they have, for the most part, the technology to address these complaints. They generally do have an interest in resolving the complaints, because if they're in violation of any special land use permit, they could face revocation of that permit or legal action, and that's probably not what they want to do, and it's expensive. So that's how, I would suggest a reporting requirement, essentially of a month. So the township's aware of, are there complaints outstanding?
So would we put that under the complaint resolution plan?
Yeah.
And so we can just put in there that a monthly complaint report is given to the township board?
Yeah, and I think right now it says annual basis, and you could, I think you could take that and change it to monthly.
Okay.
And then you might want to wordsmith that, so you're not, let's say there were one, if there was a, you know, one of these developments, and says it existed for twenty years, I don't think you want to report of, you know, the complaints that were addressed nineteen years ago.
Yeah.
So we might want to think about, you know, open for complaints within the last twelve months. Unless still open.
Okay.
Probably use better language than what I just said, but that's the way I think we can do it.
So in annual, you took off in a thirty day, forty minutes.
You report them on a thirty day basis, that would be all complaints and actions taken over the last twelve months, unless a complaint is still being processed within the twelve month period. So if you go to page eight, that would be, there's a sound noise.
Yeah, and you're, I've only had DVA, we don't have.
Page five. So my thought on this is, these are, I would say these are pretty widely adopted values. I would say, and people are probably going to disagree, using an LMAX on a forty-five, generally how you want to measure this is through an average, it'd be an LEQ, some sort. You can enforce an LMAX, but just realize that would be, an LMAX at forty-five decibels, so it would be, you know, for the most part, I think, there would be no way you could have a, any type of project. Which, you know, that's not the intent, I mean, the intent of the ordinance is.
The intent is to make sure that they are compliant.
Yeah.
It's not getting up to be eighty-five decibels, even in hours.
Correct.
Or, so it needs to be a small amount of, there needs to be a small deviation.
I think what it would, I think how you do it is you do an LEQ with a relatively short.
Recording period.
Recording period, yeah.
It needs to be, you know, it's about a minute, two minutes. Seconds. Seconds. Or the, the stuff that I've pointed out, physicians were saying, you know, by the second is one way that they do it. I don't understand all the language, but it was very clear that that is very defined, and time practice. And I sent everybody email with a whole bunch of different ones that were presented to the board. With different modelings from townships from across the state. DBA, LMAX, one second. Going at LAX.
And what level?
Forty-five.
LMAX or LEQ?
What's that?
LMAX or LEQ?
LMAX.
And that's non-participating.
Mm-hmm, kind of non-participating. All you could use, LEQ, one second.
Township could also consult a planner. With that, I mean, there's a, there's some, so my opinion is, it helps, so, and this is not, I mean, if you're thinking of the development of land, especially according to special land use permits, an LMAX at that value would probably, you know, exclude the land use. I'm not saying that would be technically excluded, but it would exclude the land use. There's just no, I mean, it's just, this is a reality.
So if you could do equivalent sound level, LEQ? Sound level measured in decibels and averages on a, on a basis almost just like for.
Yeah, I would do an LEQ, I mean, that's.
So an LEQ, one second?
I don't see that typically, even in some, I would say.
Because I suppose of all the stuff that I looked at from in different states and different townships in Michigan, that was.
So what would be some of the, what are some of those townships?
Um, there was Sydney, there was Almer.
Right. So, and this is a policy choice, the planning commission wanted to take is, in my opinion, those ordinances would basically make any sort of wind develop, utility scale wind development not feasible within them. Not saying that's right or wrong, but that's, that's the result of that.
It's not excluding, I can say like Ellington Township, they have a DVA of LE, LEQ, one second, and a DBC of one second. One needed township also, go by LE, LEQ, one second, and LEQ, one second for DBC and DVA.
Yeah, so it's some. This is, I mean, this is the hardest choice, I think, for your planning commission to make.
That's probably, I wouldn't want excessive.
But what, I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's policy choice right now of what you have to make. And I think you all know what, what, but going in the direction of some of these other ordinances, though, what would you do? I think what, or I think what might be helpful, and I think Andy was, Andy was doing this, is, you know, coming up, not having an advocate give us sound materials, like, just, just going on, online. And I think you were doing this, but just going online and reviewing what.
That's what I did, I started looking at all of them, started reading them, and looking at what, you know, that are similar to our township in makeup.
I'm sure there was just a paper you could sign.
Pardon me, no, this, they just want to know who's here, I guess.
So there's no paper you could write for, anything, what did you write?
No.
You just speak something for, at the end.
You can speak.
You can speak.
I have public comments, they're on. EBA right now, C.
C, okay. So there's nothing to sign, besides that?
No.
So I told, that's wrong. Is Linda going to speak tonight? Linda Hubbard? I see, that's my sister, I see her name there, but I didn't know she, um.
I don't know, for the public comments.
That was what I was looking.
Betty's here.
Now.
Betty's here, Ladee's here.
The head of our planning ordinance. There really isn't a difference there, it says how long we have to review certain special land use. Now, we talked about maybe defining it a little bit more for such a large project exists, so that we have adequate time to review the materials that they hand in.
So what does it, it says nothing right now?
I did not find it in there where it goes that, I mean, I'm more than happy to go look through my ordinance book again.
Yeah.
Change, or the special land use.
That's my recollection. I, from a, from a attorney's standpoint, I like that, because you want to, you don't want to have an arbitrary deadline in your zoning ordinance speeding you up. And like, let's say, I think it has a reverse effect, but let's say if we can have a year to look at this, what if it takes longer than that? I mean, I've been involved in projects that would be, a controversial land use project that, you know, the community did not like.
So if we don't have it defined, then we can take longer than, longer if we need to.
If you need to, as long as you're kind of reasonably taking actions towards it, you're not, you're not.
Studies or whatever.
Yeah, you're not, you're not kind of, it's kind of common sense to us, you're not, you're not playing games, right? You're just saying, I'm never going to consider your application, because I don't, you know, I don't pick it.
As long as we have reasonable reasons.
Yeah, as long as you're making progress.
Progress as a.
And we don't want to take third parties involved.
Well, and that's what I wanted to do, is if we did that, and shooting ourselves in the foot by, if we have third parties involved and they have to go make studies or whatever they need to do. So, and I just wanted to discuss it, because that was one of the things that somebody had brought up. And I want to make sure that we are listening to our constituents. Yeah. Yeah, apparently we don't have a, a timeline.
And most zoning ordinances will not have a timeline. You may see, so, and it sometimes becomes frustrating, sometimes you get these zoning ordinance, at least in my shoes, it'll say, you know, you have ninety days to review a site plan. That can be problem, upon its application, that can be sort of problematic, because if it's a sophisticated land use, you may want to determine whether the special land use is even appropriate before you start reviewing the site plan, because the site plan can be tedious. So I don't, I personally don't like those provisions in zoning ordinances, and it, and I think it has the effect of basically speeding you up. And let's say you're, you are doing a, you're, you're doing your job as a planning commission, reviewing an application, and you're making legitimate progress, but you have one of these time limitations in front of you, and you have what I would call, you know, an aggressive applicant, and they'll start holding you to it, and, and I don't think that, that's a good result.
I think that sounds reasonable. Just look at what we're doing now, if they'd have held us to the six months, we're not close to being done with this. This cannot be our last reading about this. But if we were held to that, then we'd have to put out whatever was planned. And that might not be a good idea. So I think it should be the same way when reviewing these requests and whatnot, and problems. We need to take the time we need.
How did we set up the differences in?
Yeah, that was. So I put in the ordinance that you guys have in front of you, under the lake setbacks. Now, I added the, it's under, on page eight. And we added the waiver system in there, if the lake is, happens to be privately owned. So, and that way, that person has the right to wait that setback for the owner's property.
And everybody's still agreeable, whatever. Would, would you mind if I made a few, it's, I think maybe improve this just a little bit. I think it's well written, but what I would want to do is, one, I think there was a concern from the public that, to make sure that we're measuring the boundaries of the lake.
Yes, and that was one, I didn't put in there, because we didn't, we didn't really define what it should be on that, so I didn't feel comfortable putting it in there, that's why I wrote the waiver system.
Yeah, the waiver, so I would change it, I would not say privately owned lake, because let's say, I would say, so what I suggested, and this is before Andy sent out her version, so I kind of, you know, independently just kind of thought of how I would do this, and I'm not saying, you know, either one of us is right or wrong. I did, what I would say is, unless all property owners on one of these lake waves, waived the setback requirement, because in my mind, and I actually do kind of a lot of business aside, because I know, but I do kind of a lot of lake work, and what is a private lake and what is not a private lake, that's not very clear, I mean, it's a common, it's common sense. Yeah, it's common sense, you, like, you think, oh, private lake means no public access, but there are a lot of, what I would, people say the private lake that has, you know, lake level control structure, and it's public infrastructure, so whether it's a private lake, I don't even, I kind of don't even want to get in. I think we want to avoid that.
If you split hairs on this, the fact that the state owns all, all the lakes, and you can only own property around it up to the water's edge.
That's another aspect of it, and it's kind of, that's why I just want to, I just want to avoid, you know, that provision not being enforceable, and someone being kind of, more or less a jerk about it. So I think what we should do is, like, all property owners, like, I think the intent of this provision is you have a, a small lake where someone basically owns the entire thing, and I know people have that. So I would say all property owners that live on the lake basically waive the requirement, so then they, they just do it, and it doesn't matter, we don't get into this private, non-private lake. The, the other thing is, it's my opinion, I don't, I haven't, I haven't asked the contractor, but I would, it would be my opinion that they would not accept something like this to be filed with them. So I would, I would, I would recommend that you would want the waivers submitted to the township. Because I don't, I, I personally don't think that they would accept those. And if they do, you don't, you don't know what they're, they're doing with it, I think it's better to keep in your records.
Well, and if it's not specified, it has to go back to the township, or the county, right?
If it's not, if, if, in this, if it's not specified, just the township, then the township would not know about it, is that what?
No, if it's not all of the ordinance, then it will go up what the county's ordinance is?
No, it wouldn't go up to the county's ordinances. I think what the intent of what Andy was doing is similar to, like, your recorded easement or something in the registered deeds office.
So it would be recorded with the property number, so if somebody went to the county and they're looking to sell that, and they come, they pull up the deed for it, it's attached to the deed, so in that way, they're completely informed.
So this is my thought on that. One, I, I think that does impose somewhat of a burden on someone, if they're, they're basically encumbering their property to waive the setback department and the zoning ordinance. So by encumbering, I mean they're putting something in their chain title. And right now, it's not written to be recorded at the registered deeds, and the property owner is, is likely not going to want to have that happen. You generally don't want to encumber your property. And then the second aspect is, this is, you're thinking of this from a, you know, if there is a project even built perspective. So let's say the waiver occurs, it's just basically papers submitted to the township. The project's basically, it's going to be built, if it, if it is built, it's going to be built, so you know they would implicitly have a waiver, because they, they just built something within that setback instance.
You should take out the private lake.
Yeah.
And just lakes.
I would say lakes by all property owners on, that, that, or, or the lake.
So all would have to sign a waiver, or could one go for the labor?
All, all would have to.
Okay.
And not so much to the county clerk, but with the township.
I would, I would give it to the, I would probably give it to the planning, because it's like an application requirement for a special land use, I would keep it to the planning commission, and then you keep it in the files of the township. And typically, let's say you even, you get to this point, you're going to have, if you get to this point and you have a zoning application, you're probably going to have a professional engineering or planning firm that is assisting you with processing this application, so they are going to retain those files. And when, let's say, you even got, you got to site plan review, they have to review this requirement, and let's say there's, they, they're going to evaluate all the setbacks. So it's going to be triggered, and you're going to have to, there's going to, it's going to be, it's going to be memorialized. It's the same way that whether an applicant is building something or proposing to build something on a participating property, that's generally a requirement to see if the applicant has even the land rights to build on, on a certain property. So I view, I view it as somewhat the same, same as that.
So we got the lake, lake thing setback? And I guess there's something here about moratorium on winter, right, special hand.
I'd like to, this time then, take, make a motion on the floor to recommend to the board that they extend the moratorium, the minimum of six months. Still allows more time for review, for research, and so that we are doing our due diligence and not rushing something through. So.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Your side?
Then at the next board meeting, we'll make sure that it is taken.
That takes care of our old business. As far as business, we have down that Linda Hubbard wants to talk to us about the effects of the winter. Is Linda here?
I don't think Linda could make it tonight. I did send all the board members the information that she sent to us. It is from Beekeeping Science and News in its research about bees and wind turbines, and about the increases winter, wind farms in the United States between two thousand and four and five, and what happens to the bee population, and how important it is to make sure that we, basically, don't interrupt the bees, because they're one of the few bee farms here in Mount Carmel County that supply all the orchards. And so she wanted to make sure that we have this, so that was in your packets that you guys got tonight when you got here. So she asked for us to read that and review it, if anybody has any questions, that, you know, they, I know that the Hubbard family says they'd be more than happy to answer any questions about things that they have encountered, and that they've, that they've read about, and what it would do and impact on their business and their livelihood within our township, which, there's quite a few of them here, and they supply a lot of orchards. Yeah, so, wanted to make that, um, let me do the next two.
Yep, you might tell you guys to rate up on it.
Okay. All right, so the next thing I wanted to bring to the board is I, I didn't get to, there's one page in your packet that I gave you guys, the MTA retreat in October, but the one before that is MTA UP Summit in September. There's still a great opportunity, you can do the virtual option, because it's in the UP, it's a hundred and ninety-nine a person. There's great educational sessions, and, like, one is election update, one is understanding ordinances, what your township needs to know about solar energies, facilities, making the most of your meetings, there's a couple more. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if any of you guys wanted to know about that or how to sign up for the MTA virtual part, you can do that, and they're recorded, and you can watch them. I just, I've been doing a lot of them, and I found them very helpful and very educational. The additional piece of paper in your packet you guys got tonight is about the MTA retreat in October. And what that is, is that's going to be in Franklin move, and there are sessions of retreats specifically for planning and zoning boards. And it kind of reviews everything. And, um, they kind of reviews everything, yep, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-six, twenty-seven, sorry. And.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it says here.
Oh, yeah. No, my printer was running out, yeah, but anyway, so. Yeah, so there's, there's several on there, but the, um, oh yeah, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the planning and zoning team retreat is on there, and they're gonna cover meeting guidelines and ground rules, uh, managing township developments, master plan information. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so that we could maybe discuss that at the September board meeting, if anybody was interested. Because I think that that's kind of a cool thing, the MTA is putting on, and the more of us that go, the cheaper the prices per person. So I wanted everyone to be aware of it, so if it was something that you were interested in, you had the information. And that's all I have.
We're gonna open this up, well, we'll take a poll of town lots, one on one, Frankie, townster, that's a person.
I apologize for interrupting anybody, I think to get, make sure all the folks can speak, we'll have, we'll have a timer. And we respectfully ask that you address all public comments to the board, uh, and not necessarily to the audience. And, uh, the board generally uses public comment, or the, the planning commission, I should say, generally uses public comment to incorporate the thoughts of the, of the community. And they may not necessarily, you know, if you ask a bunch of questions to the planning commission, they may not, they may not answer those, but just know that they're, they're thinking of your thoughts and, and trying to incorporate your, your thoughts and views into.
Would you like to start?
Hang on, who's that? This young lady over here is recording, I thought I read something somewhere, that things like this would be put on YouTube, I'd like to know if that's what's the intent here?
It is.
Well, I don't want to be on social media, is there a waiver or something I can sign that doesn't have?
It's a public meeting.
Anyone wanna start us off?
It's Valley Township, Cal, did I hear you say the home use of wind turbines, you don't wanna be a burden to your neighbors? Do you recall saying that? Does anybody else recall him saying that? Any of the public recall him saying that? Well, I haven't, I'm recording, Cal, so I, I just find it discerning that you would consider one neighbor against the other neighbor as being a burden, but with all these wind turbines in this entire community.